...here with, you know, our teachers if it's a problem. I know what I've heard before is certain teachers or schools will collect them and then you end up in a whole liability issue. Of course, I bring that up, but that's where... No, I know. But it's a way to curtail the distracted elements of it, but then there are implications with that, too. So I think if there's an issue to help our teachers and administrators with it, I'm all for looking at the policy to amend it. Do you have any... Do you have a statement?
Well, just look at that side, if you would, because it really does make some very good points. And the brain is developing, and we know that a middle school student needs to be fully attentive, and that is the bridge between elementary school and high school. And the better the student is in middle school, the better they'll be in high school. So that's the reason I'm...
See, that's where it doesn't fit me.
Now, I know what's wrong with my kids. Their cell phones have started...
Nothing's wrong with your kids. Okay. So that's all I wanted to mention about that. I want to pass out now... I was at the Acceleration Academy yesterday and got a brochure that... A little flyer that they have. They're working hard to start school next week, and this is up at Beneva, you know, where the public is on Beneva north of Fruitville. They don't have their furniture yet, but I spoke to Ellen McLaughlin yesterday, who runs our homeless program called Schoolhouse Link. She's referred five or six students. They were interviewing a young girl when I was there yesterday afternoon. Had a beautiful, big room with floors, wood flooring, and they were waiting for their furniture to arrive, and they hope to start classes next week. But this is a wonderful thing in our community, to have the ability of offering another path to a full graduation, not a GED, for these students. And I'm hoping that, you know, maybe we can work with some of them to get them then enrolled in our technical college and to other arenas, but I think this is just a wonderful aspect. So I went ahead and got a copy of this for all...
I think they have 40 students enrolled already.
Yes. Yes. And Monday, the administrator has been, you know, going throughout the community, making lots of contacts with people for other ways of recruiting students, so it's...
Now, this isn't a charter school. This is something that we contract with.
We contracted... This is a company out of Chicago, and we contracted with them in the spring, and they hired a fantastic woman from Texas, good southerner, and she's really been promoting and out involved in the community with this. I just got that yesterday, and as I say, they're not really ready for showtime, but they will be next week. And the other thing I was going to talk about was legislative platform. We really need to kind of come up with some ideas of what we want to legislatively look at. And to give you an idea of some things that we have talked about at FSBA so far and some preliminary ideas, we've talked about, obviously, a number of things, but school safety is one of them, and we want to increase the operational funds that provide us with flexibility to hire at least one law enforcement officer in every school. We want to increase funding for Safe School Facility Grant Program. We want to do more with mental health, so those are key things. And a number of other issues. I'll be... You may have received this already from FSBA. I know that you haven't. Ruth just got this out to us yesterday, but basically, look through that because figure out what we want to do this year. I really think that the school safety and the mental health component are big ones, and of course, we don't know if we'll get the same money that we got this year, i.e., that's why we are contracting with most of our consultants that are coming into our schools, because we can't hire people, because we don't know if we're going to have the money. But that's a big one. The non-rollback of the required local effort is another big one, and I think that's across the board in every county, the biggest thing. We'd love to see them, you know, change the capital mileage rate back to two mils, and then it would make it much easier to share with charter schools. And I don't know that that will happen. I'm not sure that it will, but... And really eliminate some testing. We need to eliminate more tests. We need to eliminate the tests for Oak Park as we continue to talk about people who, "Oh, haven't you fixed that?" Or, "Haven't we fixed that?" Or, "Didn't we fix that?" And then I guess the other thing that is important, I think, is pre-K. And where are we with pre-K? If you read the editorial recently in the paper about the assessment that's now being done for four-year-olds? And I will just say this, if none of you know this, but I think it's significant. We had 18 children in our pre-K program at GoShio, and we have two classes running this year. We also have a wait list now for future years. Some have said as young as one-year-olds are putting their name on the list. But of the 18, 16 of the 18 really were very high in achievement. Two had ESE issues, but they went to the summer program at GoShio, and the teacher was amazed and really wasn't prepared for the accelerated level at which they were able to... And it's just so cute at that age, but... So they're, you know, they're into kindergarten now, again, way ahead of themselves. So, I mean, you know, this is good stuff, and so we got to do something in regard to pre-K programs and consistently looking at, you know, if we started earlier, if we offered pre-K, you know, maybe we'd solve some problems of reading by third grade, because we'd get children and be able to help them in an earlier time. Shirley?
I think on the capital dollars, there is an advantage for the state giving the schools the capital dollars, because they can do it more evenly across the state, and, you know, it doesn't come out of our local capital dollars. So, I mean, I think we ought to, you know, encourage the state to do that and also look at bringing back those requirements that had been in '70, '60, or in the bills that were moving through before they became '70, '69. Look at some of those protections in there.
Those protections about charter schools and...
On the charter school capital funding. So I think that they need to look at a better way long-term on the capital funding, because I don't think that the way it's going to be... The way it worked last year and the way it's supposed to be looking next year again is a good way statewide, and it definitely isn't good for, you know, certain districts. But they should also have those rules attached to it. Talking about the pre-K and all the testing, I went to a screening of backpack full of cash last night, and besides the charter school funding issue, that, you know, they talked about the inequity between districts in a state, and we've somehow gotten past that in Florida, but in other states, there's a lot of that inequity. But one of the things they talked about was the testing. And Union City, New Jersey, basically said, "We are going to stop teaching to the test. We are going to go back to just teaching content." And they also had pre-K, not pre-K, but preschool for three- and four-year-olds, a good preschool that they were working with through the... So that they... And when they did this without strategically thinking, "We're going to teach to the test", they had more time to teach, and their scores actually went up. Their scores actually went up. And I would like to perhaps maybe look at having a couple of the schools that we've got, not looking at that data all year long, looking at just testing, just teaching, just teaching, and see if they would come out ahead. That's something I would like to... But that video, that movie is going to be shown at Jacaranda Library...
Tomorrow.
Wednesday at 5:00. It's an hour and a half, and the part about New Jersey was like at the very end, but it talked about some of the other inequities in the funding. But I think one of the things that helps in New Jersey is that pre-K funding.
Well, and, you know, you take places like Boston, and, you know, the Hinsons have gone around the whole East Coast looking at different programs, and what makes Boston and Massachusetts unique in education is they spend a lot of money on education, and they spend $10,000 a student on pre-K and preschool, third and three- and four-year-olds.
Right.
And we spend $2,400 bucks or so. Exactly. And so... And it's a three-hour program, actually, and a lot of people just don't do pre-K. You know, they don't have to. It's not mandatory that they all go through this. So we find a lot of those children that are coming to us now in pre-K are going to get a good basis, a good background, and then with the added incentive of the summer programs that's going to make it, or is making it. We've got some excellent teachers, I think, as well. But I just think those are kinds of things that we need to look at. And then, of course, we've got the whole issue of teacher retention, teacher retention and finding new teachers. And, you know, I've been talking to small counties like Glade County and Hamilton County and some of these. You know, we think we have problems. These people have lots and lots of problems, because they can't retain... They can't recruit a teacher. Nobody wants to come to Glade County, and they don't pay the kind of money that the larger counties are paying. So we really have some inequities, but again, it's the same for everybody. So what do we do? How do we retain? How do we find good teachers? Do we provide some housing? I know we just got a note from Haggen Brody talking about that. And so I think all those things are important. P3, private-public partnerships are, I think, going to be a way of us in the future.
That one-year contract for teachers, too, is something that we ought to look at, because that is another hindrance for teachers coming to Florida, because they don't like that, not knowing they can have a job, and then having difficulty buying a car, buying a home, when you've got that stipulation in law that they must have a one-year contract.
I don't see that changing, and everybody that works in private industry works at the will of the public. I know what you're speaking about.
Eric, sorry.
So I don't disagree with anything, you know, Ms. Goodwin's brought up. My issue is strategy and how to go about, you know, accomplishing the goals that we've talked here. And my personal belief is, I've said this before, Sarasota County School District's goals should be as specific as possible to Sarasota County Schools, because the people that Sarasota County School District is going to be able to influence, the people who we're going to be able to get in to talk to, who are going to care about Sarasota County Schools, are local representatives and local senators, most of which are not... None of them which are on Education Committee. So asking them to help out on global issues is problematic and is probably inefficient use of resources. We're much more likely to be able to get those people to look into things like the Summer Learning Academy, get specific appropriations for specific tasks that we need, and have them laser-focused on particular items that benefit Sarasota directly. I know it's a selfish way to go about doing it, but I think that's probably the most effective way. And those other issues that Jane brought up, I mean, obviously, we'd want to educate our representatives about those issues, so that when they do vote for them on the floor, they, you know, they're going to vote the right way. But most things are handled through the committee process, which, as Jane pointed out, they're not on those committees. And so that... But these things that are global in nature, you know, although we would educate our local representatives, I think those things are much better accomplished by coalitions and associations and things like that. And I just hope that our legislative platform would be laser-focused into one, two, three things max that are specifically solely to the benefit of Sarasota County School District. And the best example I can think of is the Summer Learning Academy.
Well, I think it has to be both. I think it has to be specific to Sarasota County, and then hopefully, we will get some support, but not probably a lot of help, because unless you're on the Education Committee, it becomes difficult to make any impact. But I do think that we should be laser-focused on those things that are important, yes, like the Summer Learning Academy. But I also think that we need to look globally, because required local effort affects every county, and I think we need to have a position on that as well. And yes, that is the Florida School Board Association, or the Coalition, or the consortium. And I think that there's a good thing to get our community support and other agencies and like-minded people to work with us, because I think that unless we have a lot of consensus and support from the county, from our community, it's going to be very difficult to get things to go in the way that we would like them to go. So I think the community piece is a very important piece. It's always been important, but it's more important than ever.
Carolyn.
I think also, where do you put the category of school safety and mental health? Do you put that? Because to me, that's a local issue. We can develop it around a local issue. I mean, so do you keep that... Do you think that is a local issue?
She's asking me questions. So, yes, if you were going to develop something around a local issue, like you wanted to do a... I don't want to say show a black belt, but if you wanted to do, you know, a particular initiative, restorative justice, or whatever you wanted to do, pick whatever you want to do. And Sarasota wanted money to implement that program as a mental health issue, then clearly that's a Sarasota issue. But if you wanted to say, "We need additional funding for mental health globally," obviously, that's something we want to educate our representatives on. Obviously, that's something that we want to talk on, but when we are strong-arming our local legislators, it's probably not going to have that much of an impact on them, just because they don't have that much of an impact on them.
Can I add?
Do you see the difference, Ms. Sucker?
Yeah.
So you're not opposed to the school safety? You just want a specific thing in school safety, and the same with mental health?
Well, when it's talking about Sarasota, when it's a Sarasota legislative agenda, I support everything. I just want to make sure. I support everything that Jane talked about. I think we can all agree, mine is an issue of strategy.
Right.
That's... Mine is not an issue of issues. Mine is an issue of strategy.
So I... And I agree. I think all of those... I think it's kind of, to Jane's point, it's kind of both, because I think when we... It's all about how you put it together, because how does that impact Sarasota specifically? But does it also line up on a global request? Sure. But the mental health, you know, and I think we need to be... I personally think you need to get away from just the broad sense of, "We need more money, X," because that just goes in one ear and out the other. There's no differentiation between that question. I think making the case of why our required local effort is, you know, why that? What's the impact to Sarasota? And that, I mean, and yes, we don't have any currently, any legislative... Good is on Education Committee, isn't she?
Who?
Good.
Well, we don't have anybody on the Education Committee. Margaret Good is on.
She's on Education Committee.
Yes, she's on.
So, but that point being said, is right now is the time to be... We need to be meeting...
Newton is on Education, too. One Gay Newton.
Right. So, but meeting and explaining, but so we can line up with some of the larger statewide organizations initiatives, but what does that mean to Sarasota? And so I love... I mean, I think we need to dive into more, but the P3 is something I've seen and read other areas are doing. It's not just schools, but other governments, because there's not funding for it. And so I think Sarasota is a great place for pilot programs, so, I mean, those are the kind of things I think we should be challenging our thing to think about. How can we implement those?
But when we talk required local effort, and I think this is true for every county...
Yeah.
What does it cost us in three years? It's cost us $100 million in Sarasota County. That's pretty local.
Yeah.
It's cost the state $4 billion, and that's a lot of money.
Mm-hmm.
That's a lot of money. $100 million in our budget is a lot of money.
So instead of... When I know in the past, we've done... And I'm sorry, I know you want to say... But we've done the little palm card. Remember, a couple of years ago, we did that? But if you do something such like that, it has to have that narrative of what... How does that impact?
Yes.
Not just, "We need..." To go back to 2.0 mils. I mean, everyone's saying that. Why? I mean, it doesn't... It's not... It's the same thing when we hear people... We just need... It needs to have an emotional piece and, you know, a tangible component to it. I know you want to speak. Sorry.
I agree. We can't just say we want a special funding item for Sarasota.
Right.
Because when you look on a statewide basis...
We're not in...
Sarasota is not a needy county.
Correct.
So we're a little greedy if we're up there asking for more money, special money for Sarasota County. What we need is to make sure that all of our legislators understand how this impacts us. And I did not sit on education appropriations any year I was up there. Not a single year was I on education appropriations, but every year, I knew what the base student allocation was. I mean, we have to make sure that all of our legislators understand how important that is to us. And now we can do a card that shows them, you know, how it affects us and what it does and what that rollback did for us. You know, we can show them that, but we need to make sure that every one of our legislators, whether they're on the committee or not, ask those questions, because I never sat on the committee, but when I gave my report on what happened in Tallahassee that year, I always told them a lot about what education was, because I knew education funding was very important to Sarasota County, as was the arts funding. I did sit on that committee. But it's important to let them know, and we need to make sure to hold them accountable, because they... Because that is one of the most important things they're going to do up there, is give us the education budget. That's one of the most important things they do, is how much are you going to fund education? Because that thing has more impact on Sarasota County than anything else they're going to do. I mean, they can bring back $1 million for this road or that road, but if they're going to short our kids, you know, $20 million, we need to let them know. We need to make sure that they know what that required local effort is. Just because they're not on the committee is no reason for them not to know what that number is.
We also are going to have our lobbyist here at our next meeting. We're going to do our review of our policy before the meeting at 6:30, and then we'll have Capital City here to talk to us about it. So this is a good time for us to put something in place. The Oak Park situation is a real thing to me.
Absolutely.
Okay? It's a real big deal to me, because when those teachers spend three days sitting there orally, attempting to give a test verbally to a student that doesn't have the cognitive ability to understand what they're doing, but that teacher is required to do that, and it takes the teacher up to three days to do one student.
Yeah.
It's horrible. And I have heard many people say, "Oh, haven't we fixed that?"
But that's a huge... And I mean, I see all of our heads nodding. If that's like saying, okay, if we had to prioritize all those, that's what we're going to push really, really hard for.
Well, that is a big one, and you see, as you remember, when we had that young girl who came from Oak Park.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that. And what was it... What did it take? And it was an every-year thing to get a waiver.
Waiver.
At that time, there were only 13 students statewide who had been given a permanent waiver. Well, those students are not going to get better in a year's time. They need a permanent waiver, not... And remember what had to be done...
Yeah.
...suit in order to get Pam Stewart to even look at this, although the statute said a hearing was part of the process.
Correct.
But she refused. So I think that is a big thing for us. So just let's get ourselves to some agreement or get some things written down, so we can discuss them with our lobbyists, some things that we deem to be important. Yes, I am continuing to work on a state level with our legislative committee, and we'll do so, and we'll run that value and run that up the flagpole as we go forward. But I think we all need to come up with some priorities that we can go after this time.
I think Oak Park is a Pacific local issue.
It is a big issue. It is a big issue for me.
But that would have a huge impact statewide, but we can...
But you could make it locally.
That's my point. I agree. And I think all of them are impactful locally. It's just how you do... How do you explain it? What's the tangible component? And I think it's just... It's that... That's the part. How do you differentiate? Not to diminish the value, this is... All of those are valuable pieces we want to go forward with, but what's the relevancy here? And that just... That differentiates it, in my mind. We have... Tomorrow, we have our meeting with Sarah Manaty and Charlotte.
Is there any agendas for that yet, or...
No.
Is there an agenda yet for that?
Yeah, we got one, but it was very vague.
It's a general agenda to discuss. That's what it is.
There you go. But in that is kind of what, from a legislative standpoint, you know, I think they're helpful. I don't know if it's... Historically, it's always been legislative discussion. I also think, especially as we all battle the complexities of the safety component, it's a great opportunity to talk to our neighboring counties on what they're doing, what they're seeing. It's not... Should just... I just... And I told Scott Hope that. I just think, for me, all of our time is valuable. Yes, let's talk about legislation. That's great, but I think it's a good opportunity in a public manner to kind of share best practices or, you know, whatever, and how we can support each other. But thank you, Jane. Was there anything else that I...
No.
Any? Okay. All right. I wanted to ask you, the crowdfunding. Did you want to talk about that? You had sent an email to the board.
Oh, that crowdfunding... The Donors Choose requires you to fill out these forms, and you have to do things and understand how it works, but, you know, I wasn't looking at anything particular now, but I know that depending upon how you frame it, is how... Whether or not it's a tax deductible for... And I'm not talking about when somebody's trying to get, you know, $100 for a classroom supplies or something. I'm talking about when somebody is spending, you know, several hundred dollars, or... So when somebody might be contributing more than $100 or a couple hundred dollars or more for a classroom, there are ways to make sure that whoever is the donor can get a tax deductible contribution when they make it. And they can do that, I believe, through Donors Choose. And I think perhaps if they go through the PTOs, if they're set up correctly, they can get... The person who's making that contribution can get a deduction. I mean, I've given money to Donors Choose, because I know I can write that off as a deduction, but, you know, I've also given to things in a classroom, and I'm like, if you did it this way, or even through Education Foundation, there are ways that, you know, just so that... And then when you're talking about small amounts, it's no big deal, but when you're talking about larger amounts, I mean, I think at one point, somebody donated a pickup truck to a baseball team in Sarasota, and I'm going back in the '90s. You know, there are ways that they can go to make sure that it's tax deductible. But, you know, I don't know that we need to talk about that now.
Okay. I know you sent an email, and I didn't... We can't talk about it before that, but...
Yeah, but that's what it was, is to help the contributor.
We had 119 Donors Choose projects...
Oh, did we?
...affiliated with our school district last year.
Well, and I think that...
I don't know how many of them were...
It's the larger picture of... I know we... For clarity, I believe, I believe, we give a $250 stipend. I mean, I don't even know what took it...
I think there's...
...to teachers at the beginning of the year.
That comes through the state. I think that comes out of the lottery funding, if I'm not mistaken. It goes through, but they have to give contributions back. But again, if we know what the Donors Choose projects are, maybe something through this... That maybe there's somebody in Sarasota County that would like to know what those projects are, so that we could help them fulfill those, because I know that if they don't get enough donors, the project's going to go away. So there might be a way that we could even connect to... These are the local Donors Choose projects that we have out here. I mean, it's not to stop it. I'm looking at ways to help promote those things. But I didn't know about 119. That's... A dollar amount would be good, too, if we knew.
And only approximately half of our teachers participate in the teacher supply grant from the state. They did tighten up the requirements a couple of years ago, where we used to just give them the money and ask them that they maintain receipts. Now they have to submit receipts to receive that money, and only half of them do so.
So that's a great... Thank you. That's actually really valuable to know, because my biggest concern is to... And this is... I know I'm not unique in this. I mean, I think we all have... We don't want to see our teachers putting money, you know, getting going into their own pockets to supply basic supplies for the classroom. We also have to be cognizant that we have a... to be cognizant that we have a, we're funded by tax dollars and we need to have some, a balance. But however we can help support them. And so, I didn't realize that only half of them are, half of them are taking advantage of that. What can we do to help them? I mean, that sounds like another, trust me, I have to do expense reports. I can't stand expense reports. So, I can only imagine the administrative burden on them on top of everything else. So, any other way we can help alleviate that, you know, I think it's great when, you know, I heard, I talked to a couple of their teachers and they talk about that they, I mean, they're incredibly creative when it talks about various grants they go out and find. And I love the innovation because it allows them, and then they don't have to go through bureaucratic red tape. They can just go and, and do these things on the fly. And I think that expands the experience for our students. But I do worry that every year, certain classroom, I just, how do we help fund or support them? And you, I don't know, if only 50% are taking advantage of that, I certainly think we should be able to, we, we increase our FAFSA completion forms. We can certainly increase, you know, our teachers' completion of, you know, their $250.
And, and I think perhaps even before we go out to Donors Choose, we, we ought to educate our teachers on what other grants are out there, what might be easier for them.
A lot of work.
So, I think we can maybe do all of those things, find out, because I know, I sent an email out that talked about a grant that you can get, and, and they refresh those monthly. So, I think maybe we ought to look at a, a place for, and teachers that they could go to apply for grants. And I'd like to know why, you know, some of, I know that, you know, I talked to a high school math teacher who said, "What do I need for my class?" You know, "I've, I've been a teacher for so long. I, you know, I'm not going to be buying these, you know, things and putting up a new bulletin board and things." You know, but when you're talking about a new teacher, or you're talking about elementary school teachers, that, that is needed. Or maybe we ought to talk about, maybe, maybe that $250, you know, they ought to look at where it, I guess, because some high schools' class, science class, I could see that $250 getting up really quick. But, you know, maybe there'd be a way that we could give it to the district rather than the teachers.
That's state money. We don't have the ability to reallocate it.
You just need to help them complete the, the forms.
But, yeah, maybe, give, give them some indication.
Get our high school.
How it's better able to utilize those dollars.
Supplies and donate it to us.
Can't leave those, yeah. Don't leave those on the table.
All of these years, I've never took advantage of, we get $100 rebate if you go and have your health medical checkup or something like that. I have never submitted the forms. I just, I'm.
I hope you get a medical check.
Oh, I get a medical checkup. I'm checked.
That's more than we need to, not, not for you. I just.
Well, I know there's a lot of teachers that won't get that $100 either. But, you know, I'm sitting here with the same issue.
I don't want to miss an opportunity, while you're talking about that, to plug our Education Foundation and their classroom grants. That really is a, kind of the foundation of what they do. It's one of their hallmarks. But a lot of our teachers are very good at applying for those grants. It's kind of one of the highlights of the year is to sit and look at the projects that are being funded through the Education Foundation. A lot of innovative stuff going on there. So, as you talk about things that are happening in our classroom and funds to classrooms, those classroom grants with.
Yeah. And they need volunteers to evaluate that. So, if you have a chance, do that. The only downside is you see so many, so many projects and trying to see which ones are good and which ones are, are bad.
It's just been rebranded into a different.
But I just want to reinforce that people can volunteer to be grant, you know, readers.
Grant writers.
Grant readers, readers and evaluators.
Both.
Yes. My wife won't let me do that anymore because I want to fund every project that I see. And so, I'm forbidden from doing that. But.
I read the grants.
Okay. Any other comments? Question, oh, Shirley, go ahead.
And, and I hope I'm not opening up a can of worms. But, but I see, I have a bunch of them under here.
It starts that way.
Can we adjourn? No?
You know, I would like an, an update on the salary study that we were talking about having. And I thought we were going to be discussing rounding up.
We are next month.
Yes. So, okay. So, let's do the easy one. You received an email from Denise Cantalupo so that you had an immediate answer to the rounding up. But scores go to the 100th position. So, it's to, if you're .99, that's, that's possible. If you're .9999, that's absolutely not true. But Denise will be with us in September. We had scheduled for her to be here today, but our option was to go without Denise and have George and Natalie do it. But we thought Denise was central to that conversation. But that's also why I asked her to send you an email because I know you're getting questions so that you had a reply that didn't wait until September. And what was the other question?
The salary study.
Yes. Salary study is actually underway. It had a $32,000 price tag, of which we paid half, $16,000, and the union paid half, the other $16,000.
Or they came across the street, or you?
Is it a job, is it a job study or a salary study?
It's a salary.
You're working together on you?
Okay. We are working together on both, a salary study, and we also have a Recruitment and Retention Committee that is being co-chaired by Eric Jackson and Sid Quinn. So, you'll be hearing from both of those groups. Roy reported yesterday at staff, "I was a little surprised that the salary study may be back by end of the month," which I was surprised by. The process there was, the union went through a separate process, but we went out through principals and department heads and said, "If there's a job that you'd like to have looked at in the job study," we didn't want to just say, "Look at every position." So, we did it targeted. The union went through a similar process. We brought a list together. There were about 50 job titles that we asked for them to look at. It is things that you probably could have created the list, areas like IT, bus drivers, bus attendants, teachers' aid, particularly how you differentiate a teacher aide and what they're asked to do at Oak Park versus some of our other school sites. But at the end of the day, there were about 50 different job titles that we asked them to look at.
Good. Thank you.
The board meeting now, so I have to go home.
Yeah.
There was an issue when we did, when someone, are they looking at total compensation? I mean, benefits to, and are they looking, comparing people within the school districts? Are they comparing people within Sarasota County?
Yes.
Okay.
All of the above?
All right.
Is that your answer, all of the above?
Yes, all of the above.
Because when, when you have somebody, an accountant, you know, you're comparing them to an accountant.
And that's one of the issues is.
An accountant here.
You may just find out that bus drivers in general are poorly compensated. And so, our bus drivers can be, you know, compensated at the same level as Manaty, Charlotte, DeSoto. And you look at SCAT and say, "Yes, they all make the same." But why is it that we still have vacancies there? And so.
Job study instead of a salary.
Yeah. And so, you may find that there's equity, but it doesn't mean that it's the right salary. And that's what they look at, is comparable positions. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Because we just had to throw away our first one when we did SCF because they were comparing us to other state colleges. And people were like, "No, it's an accountant. If they change jobs, they're not going to go to Jacksonville Community College. They're going to come, become an accountant at PGT." And so, you know, they thought that, that was a better comparison than comparative. So, that's why I just want to make sure.
All right. That wasn't quite the can of worms that I was worried that you were asking for. So, you never know. Is the, that's right. All right.
If that study wasn't underway.
Okay. Well, so, seeing no other additional comments, we are adjourned and will reconvene at 3 o'clock for our board meeting.